Let's call the City of Milton, amend a common council meeting agenda. Slash meeting to order Tuesday, March fourth, two thousand twenty fifth, six P. M. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at hometown Ace Hardware, Milton City Hall and Milton Piggy Wiggly.
Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Pledge of allegiance. I do want to mention that um elder person Ryan Holbrook and elder person Ken Smith are absent for this uh meeting and they're excused absence. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Okay, um Merrill proclamation for Women's History Month and elder person Charlotte will read that.
Women's History Month, March twenty twenty five, whereas American women of every race, class and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas every American, or sorry, American women of every race, class and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been constant consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching and study of American history. Now there were, therefore, I Anisa Welch, Anisa, the mayor of Milton, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month.
Thank you very much. Excellent job.
I am not Anisa Welch.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty five dash oh five, accepting dedication of improvements and authorizing reduction of letter of credit for Red Hawk Farms third edition.
Uh so the developer has requested the city accept dedication of the improvements for the Red Hawk Farms third edition. This includes the improvements um of the asphalt binder on the public streets, sanitary sewer, water distribution system and surface water drainage system. Uh this has been, the project has been reviewed by Baxton Woodman uh to determine the outstanding work and the value that should be retained for the letter of credit is sixty seven thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars. Passing this resolution again accepts dedication of those improvements and allows for the reduction of the letter of credit to that amount.
Any questions or comments and is there a motion?
Whoops, I would move approval of um resolution twenty twenty five oh five, accepting dedication of improvements and um authorizing reduction of letter of credit for Red Hawk Farms third edition.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty five oh six, accepting dedication of improvements and authorizing reduction of letter of credit for planned unit development by Backyard Properties of Rock County LLC.
The developer has requested um the city accept dedication of the improvements for uh improvements completed in their first two phases of the P. U. D. Those improvements include uh public streets through the first lift, sanitary sewer system, water distribution system and surface water drainage system. Baxton Woodman has reviewed uh the project to determine the amount of outstanding work and the uh the letter of credit can be reduced to the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred forty seven for that outstanding work. Again, passing this resolution accepts dedication of those improvements and allows for reduction of the letter of credit to that value.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I'd move approval of um resolution twenty twenty five oh six, accepting dedication of improvements and authorizing reduction of letter of credit for planned unit development by Backyard Properties.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Okay, your presentation and discussion on the two thousand twenty four tourism report and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Christine Reebout with the Janesville Convention and Visitors Bureau and here just to give you an update on our contract for tourism promotion services. Um I've got a few slides. You don't need to look solely at me. You can enjoy some of our uh content that we have created. Um I have to start with just what a pleasure it has been to work on this as we enter year six. Um I'm a Rock County native from Edgerton. Um and it's just been really fun to dive into Milton and really explore. There's so much here and you have a great community and I'm sure as elected officials, you don't always hear that. You often hear the complaints. So I'm hoping these next few minutes are all about the positive and all that you guys have to offer. So again, just as an overview, this is a partnership between the City of Milton, the Milton Chamber and us, the Janesville Convention and Visitors Bureau. For the years prior to that, I would often come in um and chat with the city and with the chamber or talk about kind of what's happening in tourism in Northern Rock County. And as we began those discussions, we found that it was hard for the city to do some part of tourism, hard for the chamber to do parts of tourism because the chamber really needed to represent members and the city needed to stay within those city boundaries. And visitors to a community don't really pay attention to either of those. Um they don't know where the city limits are and they don't know who may be members or who isn't. So really finding an organization to present tourism as a whole and not look at those boundaries was really the goal that we were looking for. So in two thousand nineteen, we entered that partnership. Again, this is our sixth year of the partnership. It's done on an annual renewable contract basis. Every few years, we take a look at that contract, make sure there are any updates to that. Um and it's a twelve thousand dollar investment, six thousand coming from the City of Milton and six from the chamber. So that's equally split. And we do use that twelve thousand for the Visit Milton promotion. Some of the partner goals we talked about when we were bringing this uh partnership together and that we still really look at as our litmus test and what we do is uh for the City of Milton, we know that you want successful commerce. You want your hospitality businesses, whether it be restaurants, retail, um attractions, events. We know you want them to be successful, happy, and uh that also provides engagement for residents. We know what's good for the visitor is good for the resident. Um they use the same restaurants, the same um attractions and the same events. For the Milton Chamber, they wanted a successful draw for new commerce. And for us, we want a star tourism project in Northern Rock County. We want um things to be unified and we know that there's ebb and flow between the two. Again, a visitor doesn't know where those borders are. They just want to have a great time when they're coming into Northern Rock County. This is also a good time to mention, we do also represent Edgerton. We have a contract uh to do the Visit Edgerton promotion. So it works beautifully to have these three communities working together and providing that tourism project. Some of our campaign goals are really to create awareness of Milton attractions, businesses and events, just to make sure nobody's missing out on the good stuff that you guys have to offer here in the community. To grow a social media presence, I think we all know that's where most people are getting their information from. As hard as we try to, you know, direct people to directly to the city's website, for example, you probably know that they're following your social media strongly. So that's strong social media presence. That's accurate information is also really important because there may be other messages out there. We wanted a strong presence uh for Milton there. To reach audiences outside of Rock County. Most people in Rock County are aware of what you have to offer. Uh there's a huge draw to that Newville area. They may have know what you have there, but they might not be aware of the nuances that you have here in Milton, some of the great new shops downtown, some of your retailers, some of your restaurants. To drive and deliver relevant traffic to Milton Attractions, Businesses and Events. You know, we want to care both about quantity and about quality. We want to bring a lot of people into the downtown, but we also want them to bring their pocketbooks, quite honestly. Your um your uh retail businesses want to know that people are coming who have that ability to spend some money. So we do want to care about that traffic that has the ability to spend while they're here. We wanted to enhance visual assets. When we start promoting a community, we need really great pictures and really great video. Um and that was important us to have those visual assets. We wanted to highlight the outdoors. We know that the pandemic taught us that outdoors are always there. You have great trails, great parks, splash pad in the parks. Bring my daughter here all the time for those assets. And those are available to any social demographic, anytime, um no matter what might be going on in the world, those parks and trails are open and available. We wanted to target road trip tourism. So we know that Milton might not be their only stop. They might be driving through on the way to Wisconsin Dells or further up north. That's okay. If we're their first stop and their last stop, that's perfectly fine. I say I love that the Dells has a multimillion dollar budget because if you're coming from Illinois, you're driving right through Rock County. So that's okay if we're not their final destination. When we look at our primary target markets, and I'm sorry, gentlemen, but quite often we're targeting women because we know they might be the making the travel plans and talking that spouse into it. We target couples and families. We know that what we have to offer here is very family oriented. Um your library, all of those things, we know that they're just oriented in that way. Uh we target Northern Illinois. Like I said, it's an easy road trip and they might be coming somewhere else. If you're in downtown Chicago and you're surrounded by cement and traffic, a trip here to Milton has a lot of appeal. There's no parking. There's not a lot of traffic. It's a, it's a great visit. We target Southern Wisconsin and then we've had a great luck in Northern Iowa. A lot of draw from Dubuque and that area seems to be a growing place where we're doing some targeted marketing in that northeastern Iowa area. What are some of our tactics for that marketing? Um we manage webpages on the Visit Milton website. So the Chamber's website has a page directly for tourism. We manage the content on that page. We also do the calendar event updates for any tourism um events for the City of Milton's calendar. We do the digital media, so that's uh social media, um any Google AdWords or anything that's digital that you're seeing on a tablet, phone or laptop. We do paid advertising, print advertising. We do a what we call a high volume printed brochure. It's a trifold. Our goal is to give a lot of them away. Uh we do the Travel Wisconsin website updates. If you go to TravelWisconsin.com, we manage all those Milton updates, make sure that content is accurate and it's getting in the right places. This is just a look at those Visit Milton webpages. Again, we try to keep updated content. Restaurants um are really hard. You know, there's a great turnover. So that's always something we're working on, keeping those restaurants updated and then a special event. So we manage those two um website pages. Just a little bit on the social media, we've had great engagement there on the Visit Milton page. We have over seven thousand followers and this was at the end of two thousand twenty four. These are two thousand twenty four statistics we'll talk about. In that year, we had over three hundred thousand unique users reached and that's really touch points. Anytime somebody touches, clicks on, pulls up a post or goes to the profile. Two thousand clicks that links through um and over ten thousand profile page visits. And everything is really positive and that's what I like about tourism is that people are generally having a good time. They'll trickle in with some things that are less positive. But so many people there, we watched them discover Milton for the first time. So if you need a little pick me up, go to that Visit Milton page on Facebook and just read through some of those comments and you'll see some real appreciation for what you have to offer. And we just pulled out just a few of the comments and the statistics. You'll see um that we're getting good reach um in Janesville, in Rock County and then into that Northern Illinois. And again, taking a look at some of the photography there, winter months too. Uh it's tricky to capture the beautiful snow in the last couple of years, but we have been able to get some winter uh shots too. Instagram, now that we have a really good collection of visual assets and photography, we've been able to grow that Instagram presence with over thirteen hundred followers, over forty four thousand unique visitors reached. There's the clicks of two hundred and eight and then seven hundred and ninety two profile page visits and Instagram is very rich in content. So that's why we're continually getting photographs. We can't just photograph something once or do video once. We want to have really fresh content there to keep them engaged. Our advertising, we do print advertising. There's some samples there. Um we do also do Google AdWords and some other partnerships. We manage the page in the Rock County Tourism Guide. The ad that you see on the right is a partnership again with Janesville, Edgerton and Milton in a group tour based magazine. So that's people who will come by busload. They'll bring in a busload. They'll come to the Milton House. They'll look for something to do while they're here. So we've done some um advertising specifically in the group tour market because we know they might stop at Sterling North and Edgerton. They might stop at Milton House and they might stop at the Rock County Historical Society and we've built a package by combining those places to make a really appealing trip for them. We also work to bring travel writers and influencers in, which is a lot of fun because they have a lot of followers and it just kind of spreads. We say it's kind of contagious like the common cold. If you can get that influencer here and really spread that out. They um really enjoy going to places like uh North Leaf, Timber Hill, Milton House. Uh Buckhorn has a great reputation for that. So all of those uh visits that we have. We also um do have some placement on our TikTok account. Now that ebbs and flows and there's a lot of opinions on how that will continue, but uh we've had some really viral posts that have followed that Newville area that benefit both Edgerton and Milton. We've had one that over a million views on TikTok and it was really just hanging out at one of those places right along the water. Again, our photography is really important and many of you have probably met at this point, Nicodemus Nemo. He does our photography for Milton because he lives here. He's a passionate resident. So we do hire him to go out and do our photography. Again, we always pay our photographers because we know there's tremendous value in what they do. So they're out and about in the community quite a bit. You'll also see Katie on my team here who does all of her social media and all of our reels. She quite often will be in the stores and shops doing that video or that photography. Again, that trifold brochure, we distribute that at the Travel Center, the Wisconsin Travel Center in Beloit. We do a paid placement there. So if you're familiar with the Travel Center, um all of the brochures inside, you can place there free of charge, but if you want to be in the front section, it's open twenty four hours. That's where we do some paid placement to make sure that whatever time of day somebody's coming through there, they could grab that Milton brochure. That's kind of the end of my prepared comments, but I'm happy to talk about things that you're seeing, things that that you love about Milton or any questions that you might have.
Do you um have any specific challenges that you see on the horizon or currently that you're looking at opportunities to address?
Yeah, we follow a lot what's happening, both politically, trends for people, you know, are they worried about spending? I think there's concern in the industry for anyone that might be a fly to destination or anybody who is expensive to visit. I think some of the economic concerns sometimes help a smaller drive destination. Um somebody who might be saying, we're going to go to Disney World this year, but we're going to take a staycation instead. So we try to be aware of what those trends are and take advantage of it. Are we pushing affordability? Are we pushing safety? Um you know, there are a lot of trends with social media with, you know, TikTok was down and then it was back up again and you know, those reels also, we reuse any of those videos on Instagram and other places, but you know, is Facebook going to stay where it is? And Katie on my team is fabulous and kind of follows those trends and where they are. Um and we, we try to make sure our content is usable everywhere. So I'd say there's a lot of trends we're worried about, but it's advantageous sometimes to be that small community. Um you know, if you're Disney World, people spend a lot to go there. It's a, a big investment. Being a small destination, we can catch people who are hesitant to travel.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
When the Woodman Center opens, how will that change strategies or um you know, that's likely to have a regional impact?
It definitely will. We are excited um for that opening in late August, early September. Um and we've already have some larger groups booked to come in. Youth sports, for example. Um quite often, if you're coming with a tournament and you're traveling with kids, you've got that, you know, that sibling who doesn't play and is bored and wants to do something. So they might look to come to nearby communities. We also know we'll have some push out for food and beverage where they want to go out a little bit further. But we are definitely booking in not only those sporting groups, but also a couple of larger scale meetings that we've made some commitments to where they're going to be coming in for three or four days with more of a corporate traveler. They're going to enjoy things like the wineries that you have here. They might like Milton House depending on what their focuses are. So we think you'll definitely see that push out because again, people don't see borders and it's ten to fifteen minutes from that facility to here. So you'll definitely see people that are interested in that. And we'll try to be really aware of letting people know if there's a group that wants to come in and use Timber Hill that are slightly different hours or another of your wineries. We'll make sure they know about it. So I think communication is really going to be key. So we let people know if a large group that might want to come down and shop, but it's going to be after five P. M., making sure that everybody knows about that.
Any other questions or comments or suggestions? Thank you very much. And thank you for coming to CDA and giving us this presentation.
Yeah, my pleasure. Again, all of us, uh everyone on my team loves promoting Milton. In fact, for, we had a, a work anniversary and we came to Cindy's Cafe to celebrate that because that was what everyone was hungry for. Thank you.
Okay, discussion and possible action regarding providing a temporary limited easement to Northern Natural Gas.
Uh Northern Natural Gas is proposing to relocate its pipeline in the business park. Uh Northern Natural Gas, N. N. G. has a gas distribution pipeline crossing the business park as the line currently sits and interferes with future growth as well as expansion of the rail spur line. Uh working with city staff and local companies, N. N. G. is proposing to relocate the line so that it does not interfere with future growth. As part of the relocation, N. N. G. is removing the current line. In order to do so, they're requesting a temporary limited easement on city property to deploy their equipment and work crews. The easement will last for twenty four months. However, N. N. G. has indicated that their work shall be, uh should be completed at the end of the year. The land is currently leased to a farm, but uh N. N. G. has agreed to reimburse the farmer for any crop damage. Uh there's no fiscal impact for the city immediately, but obviously having that access for future growth is quite important to us. Uh city administration recommends approving the temporary limited easement with Northern Natural Gas.
Questions or comments? Or a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the temporary limited easements with Northern Natural Gas.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand twenty five dash five five eight, amending section sixty six dash seventy one concerning removal of snow from sidewalks.
The Public Works Committee discussed the current snow removal ordinance and time limits requiring a snow removal at the January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five meeting. The committee has recommended reducing the snow removal time limit from sixty hours to twenty four hours for residential areas. The proposed ordinance language is attached. There is no direct cost impact for this ordinance revision. It is possible that the mo- modification could result in a change to the number of violations and the need for snow removal by cities, by the city. Uh city administration recommends approving ordinance two thousand twenty five dash five five eight, amending section sixty six dash seventy one concerning removal of snow from sidewalks. Enactment of an ordinance requires a first, second and third reading and a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the time, at the same time the first reading is completed.
Well, this is um an issue that has come before the council multiple, multiple times over the years. So it's nothing new to um many of you. And um I was at the Public Works meeting where they discussed this and made this recommendation. Um that's before the council.
And this came to light a little bit from um some information from some community members um based on the concern of we have so many walkers to the schools. Um and we have a lot of walkers and runners in our community as well. So sixty hours is what it is currently, which could be a week or more depending on consistent snow. So um I think the staff, you do a great job looking at other communities, surrounding communities and hold on, I'll get the whole, I'll make a motion to approve. My computer is dying. I apologize. Okay, it died. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the snow removal ordinance two zero, number two zero two five dash five five eight, amending section sixty six dash seventy one, removal of the snow from sidewalks from sixty hours to twenty four hours. And I'm going to waive the second and third reading and something the first. And elect for the first.
Adopt.
Adopt the first.
Oh, second, or second.
Thank you for your help. Did I hear a second? Okay. There is a motion in a second. All those in favor, yeah, to um adopt and waive the second and third for this ordinance, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, this has been like years coming. So congratulations, council. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty five oh seven in support of reauthorization of state funding Knowles Nelson stewardship program and our council president has so graciously agreed to read the resolution.
Thank you for this opportunity. Okay. Whereas the Wisconsin Legislature created the Knowles Nelson stewardship program in nineteen eighty nine to preserve valuable natural areas and wildlife habitat, protect water quality and fisheries and expand opportunities for outdoor recreation per chapter twenty three dot oh nine, one, five, two, C. D., Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the Knowles Nelson stewardship program is set to expire in two thousand twenty five and the program has supported land acquisition and capital development by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, local governments and nonprofit conservation organizations to preserve valuable natural areas and wildlife habitat, protect water quality and expand outdoor recreation for public benefit around the state. And whereas the City of Milton has directly benefited over the years and whereas the City of Milton is a designated Ice Age Trail community, which understands the importance of the Ice Age National Scenic Trail in driving visitation to its community and supports efforts to complete the trail, which will require stewardship funding. And whereas the City of Milton Common Council considers the Knowles Nelson stewardship program a valuable tool to preserve and restore natural areas, wildlife habitat and water quality while supporting the development of public nature based outdoor recreation opportunities that promote economic development and enhance quality of life, including the Ice Age National Scenic Trail. And whereas it is the intent of the common council to express its support of the reauthorization of the Knowles Nelson stewardship program in two thousand twenty five with sufficient funding allocated to fund projects over the next ten years to our state legislators and the governor. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Milton Common Council does hereby express to the Wisconsin Legislature and Governor our full support for the reauthorization of the Knowles Nelson stewardship program and request that sufficient funding annually be allocated to support the project over the next ten year period. Be it further resolved that the City of Milton Common Council directs the city clerk to forward a copy of this resolution to the offices of each of our state legislators and officer, office of the governor adopted this fourth day of March, two thousand twenty five.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of resolution two thousand twenty five oh seven uh supporting renewal and funding for the Knowles Nelson stewardship program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So discussion and possible action regarding comprehensive plan update proposals. Paul?
Uh the city is updating a, the comprehensive plan in two thousand twenty five. State law requires that a municipality update its comprehensive plan at least every ten years. The comprehensive plan is a long range document that outlines the city's vision for future development encompassing land use, housing, transportation, public services and other key aspects. In January, staff sent out a request for proposals to have a firm assist us in updating our comprehensive plan. Seven firms replied and sent in proposals. Comprehensive planning law requires that these nine elements be included in the plan, issues and opportunities, housing, transportation, utilities and community facilities, agricultural, natural and cultural resources, economic development, intergovernmental cooperation, land use and implementation. Another important aspect of the comprehensive plan development is public engagement. Each proposal has a public participation element. And all seven firms have experienced updating comprehensive plans in Wisconsin. Uh staff has reached out to each firm's references and all references replied with positive responses. For fiscal impact, the city has budgeted sixty thousand dollars to update the For fiscal impact, the city has budgeted sixty thousand dollars to update the comprehensive plan. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed these plans at their meeting earlier today and has recommended the uh, common council uh, table this uh, for today. Uh, they'd like to bring back two uh, of the proposals, two of the companies that offered proposals to have in-person interviews at the next uh, Planning Commission meeting. Those two would be the redevelopment resources studio G W A and Vander Wallace Associates.
And they also would be, the Planning Commission would be open to having a joint council Planning Commission meeting. Um, so the council could hear these proposals as well.
I, I would move we postpone consideration of this item until the March eighteenth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, and we will have those presentations at an upcoming meeting and invite the council. Unless the council doesn't want to be invited. We're going to invite you, but you don't have to come. But we wish you would. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash five-fifty-nine regarding special events.
Okay, I will take this one. Uh, so this is at the last council meeting. The council discussed the policy and the ordinance regarding special events and directed staff to put together an ordinance that uh, instead repeals what is in the ordinance itself and then directs the policies towards the special event permit application. So that information is included in this specific ordinance. Um, and then just as a reminder, the enactment of an ordinance requires a first, second, and third reading and motion to adopt. And if the council prefers, the second and third reading uh, may either be waived or pushed to another meeting.
Did everybody have an opportunity to read this ordinance? And do you have any questions? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five five-fifty-nine repelling chapter fifty-four and amending section fifty-six through sixty-seven concerning special event permit and renumbering section fifty-four through seventy concerning penalties. Uh, waive the second and third reading and adopt.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding special events permit application packet. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-five five-sixty concerning delinquent taxes assessments and claims.
Uh, while going through this ordinance process, attorney Schrader had reviewed the current section one sixteen A about any delinquent fees due to the city of Milton and any permits or registrations that are issued. Uh, so this is an update to that section that just clarifies that all bills owed to the city must be paid before the license registration permit is issued and renewed.
I would move approval of, of the first reading of ordinance five-sixty amending section one through sixteen A concerning delinquent taxes, uh, taxes assessments and claims. Uh, waive the second and third reading and adopt.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. Um, discussion and possible action regarding recommended forfeitures for special events permit.
Uh, Judge Chris Cuffler with the Milton Municipal Court has provided the attachment for the recommendations to council for the recommended forfeitures for first and second and subsequent offenses for violation of the special events um, packet and the ordinance itself related to chapter fifty-four dash ninety-one.
Any questions or comments or a motion?
Are we just looking for an approval of the forfeitures for the special events? Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. General items, committee reports. Where am I? The packet, the packet. There are so many things. I keep thinking I'm reading the same thing over and over. Discussion and possible action regarding special events permit application packet.
So special event permit application packet has been updated with the changes that were approved by the common council on the February eighteenth meeting. Um, and then along with these changes, there was also an additional document added to the end that clarified street closures and traffic control plan. Uh, this is a recommendation uh, by Director Langer and Chief Saxi to clarify and make it a little simpler for all staff. While we're discussing this packet and then also the ordinances, there was an item that came up that was discussed with Alder Person Smith. And that was um, if there was an interest of having an application fee. Uh, so the reason that this was brought up is the previous ordinance actually did have an application fee included, but it was not approved by the common council by resolution. There was not a fee associated with it. Um, so um, Alder Person Smith had asked that I share this information with the council. Is good evening, fellow council members. I spoke with Ms. Salvo on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five about possible changes to the special event ordinance she and city attorney Mark Schrader discussed. I feel a fee to file a special event packet is appropriate. The city charges a fee for most, if not all, other permit requests, and I see no reason to exclude a fee for special event permits. Just as with other permit requests, there are costs associated that should be shared by the person or organization making the request. If an individual organization is submitting multiple packets for a repetitive event, I recommend charging a single fee since the time demands on city staff will most likely not be greatly increased. Lastly, I recommend a fee of fifty dollars. This is not an unreasonable amount to deter individuals or organizations from applying for a permit. This amount will most likely not cover the actual costs associated with processing the requests, but will offset some of the financial burden placed on the taxpayers of our community. I apologize for not being able to attend this evening and hope you all have a great meeting. So if this is something that would be added, it would be added to the special event permit application as part of the policy.
So we wouldn't have to come back and change the ordinance?
No, the ordinance that was approved in this evening directs the policy to, that information to put in the policy. All of the procedures are included in there.
So it would just be a change to the packet?
Yes, which is included in there is the policies.
So this um, this permit packet applies to renting pavilions in the Milton House?
Uh, no, this is a special event permit packet.
So they don't hit, so this isn't going to require, because we require deposit, right?
We require deposits for park, shelter rentals in the Kennedy House, yes.
But and those are returned after inspection?
Yes, okay, that is correct.
I guess I would like to know more information from staff. For instance, do you get a lot of permits or event forms that like are, that don't move forward? So like, it's a lot of busy work?
I do not remember recently where we've had an application for a special event permit that the event has not happened unless it was weather related.
How much staff time per permit would you say is spent? How many hours?
I would speak to the permits um, themselves. You know, not a lot, other than the events that do require the road closures. Again, those do involve some time with coordinating with the state to get the the road closure permit approved. If, if it's on a state route, so basically Madison Avenue or Jansel Street.
It, it varies. Some permits are fifteen minutes, some are an hour or more based on correspondence with the applicant because there might be missing information. It's hard to put a definitive amount on it.
And I would say from the city hall staff, it's roughly about an hour. Um, with this particular change um, of going to council, then there's a, a little bit of additional just to add it to the agenda. Um, but again, very minimal on that side.
My vote would be no, just because I know we've had a lot of events um, that have come organically and I don't think those events would happen, have happened if there was a fee. I mean, I don't think it's that much, but I don't know what Ken, I wish he was here because I don't know what he's talking about with the burden to the taxpayers. It would alleviate the burden.
I think he's, I would guess, and I'm not speaking for him, but I would guess that he's talking about the taxpayers paying staff time. So if it's an hour of Chief's time and an hour of Jenny's time and three or four hours of Mark's time, that adds up quite a bit if you look at what we pay them for their time. I would guess that's what he's talking about because it's only staff time that's involved.
My vote is still no.
Okay, well, we don't have a motion.
I make a motion to say no, to not move forward with Ken Alderman Smith. To approve the policy with the fifty-dollar application fee.
Okay, is it like?
With, to approve the policy without the fee, no fee.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the city of Milton's special event permit packet without fee as presented, correct?
Uh, can I clarify that it's just then as presented?
Correct, as presented.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. What number are we on finally?
Committee reports.
Committee reports. I've been trying to get to agenda item eighteen thirty times now. I suppose there are no committee reports, but just in case. Carla?
Um, can I just clarify, are we now done with the restriction of accepting special event packets?
The motion uh, was to delay them until today.
Today.
So they're good to go again.
Perfect. Okay. Twelve oh one, twelve oh one. Any like committee reports from anyone? Anybody attend any meetings at all? Teresa, you did? Oh, we, they had fire. I attended, I attended, I attended. I'm trying to think of them.
I attended the gathering place.
Selected uh, J P Cullen as the um, the um, project manager, is that what?
Correct.
The project manager for the buildings, for the, so that's what we did. Teresa wasn't there, but she could have done as good a job as I just did. And there is no March meeting
Right, no.
For the fire commission. Um, so in April, I believe someone else will be attending. Who shall be named, who has yet to be named. I think they need to be named because the meeting is going to be the second um, Thursday, second Thursday in April. Okay. I might promote somebody the second, the first, April second, there might be a promotion. Else for anyone? Anything else? Okay, um, quick team building. What is that, you know, indulgent thing you do when you stay at home sick and you're not actually taking care of another human being that's sick also?
So I typically don't eat a lot of bread and carbohydrates, but when I'm sick, I feel like the extra calories are going to help me get over it. So I'd tear up the Quick Trip sandwiches, like one of all of them, like, seriously, I love them. Yep. That makes, makes me feel better, actually, so.
Thank you, thank you for making me feel better about myself, too.
I, I usually don't drink tea, uh, but if I don't feel well, um, you know, an herbal tea, something like that is, is good.
I don't usually watch a lot of T V, but I love binge-watching like, especially those Hallmark feel-good movies that you're afraid to admit.
I indulge in a lot of music.
I will say anything grape. I really dislike anything grape and, but when I'm sick for some reason, Gatorade and those Power Aids and Popsicles, I go for the grape.
So I binge-watch and I eat extra carbs. Especially, yeah, ice cream, I love ice cream.
I would say extra comfy clothes and binge-watching.
Mine's kind of boring, I just sleep more.
Eyes, I am sick and you're dragging this on.
I'll just agree with Paul, I just want to be left alone asleep.
Yeah, when I have a man cold, it's just a lot of TV watching and leave me alone.
A man cold, okay, I forgot the proper term.
I don't think I indulge in anything special. If I want to indulge in something, I'm going to do it whether I'm sick or not, so I don't know.
So you are living the life we all want to live.
Right.
Do you ever get sick?
Not enough to not go to work.
You should be sitting next to me right now.
Want a few days off?
Last I can think of is when I, I can say when I stayed home with my daughter and we binge-watched Green Acres, so.
And our audience? When you get a man cold?
I'd like to make a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one C, Wisconsin statutes, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. City administrator evaluation.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It was unanimous. Okay. Next meeting date is March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned.